Good evening, everybody. Everybody here, maybe? Let's just do a check-check. Everybody here? Stay here, good. Thanks to all the board members who can join us tonight for this committee and whole meeting. Terri James is the Chair of the Regional Collaborative Oversight Committee, which is overseeing this report, but she's unable to be here in person tonight, and she has asked that I step in and open the meeting. We're meeting for one purpose, and that's to allow our Recreation Plan Implementer, Tanya Harrington, to present what she has found to this point in her three years with us. So as a backstory, just as a reminder, two years ago, we hired Sandtech to do a regional recreation master plan, and out of that came Tanya with a defined goal for her to work on. And so she's going to present what she has for us so far. So, Tanya, I'm going to turn it over to you to do your presentation.
Wonderful. I'm unmuted, I believe. I'm good?
You're good.
All right, so I'm gonna just share my screen here. I'm gonna have a visual component to the presentation. All right, so before I begin with the dynamics of virtual meetings, I'm just gonna explain to the board that although it's not apparent right now, I'm eight, almost eight months pregnant now. And around this time of night, I do tend to get a little uncomfortable. And so if the meeting is a little long, I may just choose to stand, just to get a little bit more comfortable. I just don't want anybody misinterpreting my body language, thinking that I want to leave or that I'm getting antsy. So just a heads up that I might just adjust a little bit to get comfortable if the meeting is a little prolonged. So jumping into the presentation here. So tonight, the discussion, we're gonna focus on major recreation facilities. And a problem that's been identified with major recreation facilities is that the ability for one community to sustain and maintain a major recreation facility is a challenge. And it's not just a challenge for a few municipalities or just some regions. It has been identified as a problem across the province and even across Canada, and especially in small rural communities. It's very difficult for small rural communities to sustain and maintain those larger recreation facilities to be able to serve the community's needs. So solutions that have been applied in the most recent years have been to see multiple communities be able to sustain major recreation facilities. So coming together collaboratively and cooperatively to be able to see these major facilities maintained for the region. So a couple of examples right within our province would be Kent North. They came together to see a new facility built. So a few local service districts and a couple of municipalities, they were able to collaborate and cooperate to see not only a new facility built, but an agreement to see their dollars maintain this facility. And then an example right within our region, Harvey Manor Sutton. This was an example of a facility to help keep the doors open. They were in a situation where they needed to, they needed contribution in order to maintain their facility. And so this is a great example of collaboration and cooperation within our very own region, where they were able to come together and see cost sharing be a solution to keeping the doors open. And now they have, I'll touch on this in a second, but really great programs and really able to service the community. So the province has given the Regional Service Commissions an opportunity to be able to facilitate the conversation of cost sharing and address this challenge all across the province, but be specific to their own region and be able to apply a solution that's unique to the region. Because as I'm sure we can all appreciate, our region, the dynamics of our region with several small rural communities, islands, were much different. Our dynamic is much different than, for example, even our neighbors, where the Fundy region has several large municipalities. So our solution, our region's solutions to major recreation facilities may look different than even our neighbors. So we have the opportunity, the Regional Service Commission has the tools from the province and the opportunity to be able to apply a solution that's unique to our own region. But as you know, and as Joyce mentioned, the Recreation Master Plan was done back in 2018. And in that Recreation Master Plan, there was policy that was suggested for collaboration and cooperation around major recreation facilities. And in my last two years of working within the region and then in having more conversations with individual board members, I've tried to reach out to almost everyone and to be able to really get their input on the, some of the suggested policy and the, just the general idea of cost sharing and what their concerns are. So when we have, you know, Sandtech did a great job with outlining a wonderful policy. And so in the last two years of working within the region, I've been able to take that policy and tweak it a little bit to be able to better address some of the concerns and some of the unique challenges that our region has. And as you can appreciate, you know, a consultant coming in just for a couple of months and kind of phasing over what could potentially be a solution. This was just a little bit more of a thorough way to find maybe a more tailored solution for our region. So I'm just gonna review, the policy that was sent, the document that was sent is a draft version of a proposal for policy around cost sharing and collaboration and cooperation around major recreation facilities. So I'm just gonna kind of have a high-level overview of what that policy is suggesting. And then we can ask, I would welcome questions and comments. And of course, we can talk about what potential next steps could look like. So to start off with, the general concept is to divide the region into subregions for the purposes of cost sharing, and it'll be based on high school catchment areas. So you can see this lovely little map of our southwest region. And these areas here are broken up according to high school catchment regions. So the idea would be, the suggested policy would see two cent per $100 property tax assessment. And this would be all communities contributing. So municipalities and local service districts all contributing to one pot, if you will. But the contribution being divided according to high school catchment. So within the high school catchment, the contribution dollars of those communities would go to the major recreation facilities within that high school catchment. You can see my little pictures here, but just to give you an example. So in Western Charlotte, all the local service districts and municipality within Western Charlotte, so that would be the high school catchment around St. Stephen High School, they would all see their dollars, their two cents per $100 tax assessment, contribute towards the Garcelan Civic Center. In theory, that community, those communities would use that major recreation facilities in the region because it's within the vicinity, and I'll touch on that in just a second. So in looking at the various facilities that would potentially have been proposed to receive cost sharing, we checked out, you know, it was great to be able to kind of take a look in an inventory to see the major recreation facilities within our region. They serve a wide demographic in terms of ages. From, you know, daycare, this is the Harvey Community Center. So they have space that rents out at daycare. They have a bowling alley that the seniors love. They use their facility for major community events. They have a gymnasium that even the school uses for certain events. So this is a great example of a major facility that would receive, well, it's already receiving cost-sharing dollars. But, you know, just an example of a facility that's really serving the wider population base. And looking at other facilities that would receive, potentially receive that, those cost-sharing dollars, not only do they receive, or not only do they serve and have and host dynamic program that, for example, for example, the Wellness 50+ Club got seniors programs right at the Garcelan. You've got the younger demographic taking swimming lessons. So not only do they serve a wide age demographic, but what we found was that the programs that we looked at and took an inventory of, these programs also serve the wider community as well. So not only do they serve the municipality in which the facility is, they also serve the wider communities, including the local service districts. And what was great was that an inventory of these programs really confirmed the high school catchment model. The majority of community members that were part of these programs were really concentrated within that high school catchment, so the local service districts within the high school catchment and the municipality were the majority of users for these programs. And then, of course, looking at other facilities in the region that are potentially going to be receiving cost-sharing dollars, it was really encouraging to see that these facilities are already changing and adapting to be able to serve their community better. So for example, the W.C. O'Neill Arena is converting space that was not previously, or was previously vacant, is going to be, you know, modifying that to become a health center. So they're investing in the recreation facilities to be able to serve. And of course, that health center is going to serve the wider community. So, and then the Black Harbor, Black Harbor is a great example. They've got plans to see a wheelchair lift to better serve the wider population as well. So when having conversations with individual board members about concerns around cost sharing, a common concern that came up was that there, if there's contribution going towards a major facility, that there should be oversight, that there should be accountability. And the last thing that I think all of us in the community want to see is dollars going towards a facility that is no longer meeting the needs of the community. So we want to try and avoid that. But with oversight, an unanimous feedback from a lot of board members in chatting was they didn't want to see more committees, didn't want to see more layers of governance to oversee this process. There was a, there was an anonymous feedback that the Regional Service Commission as a board could serve as an oversight body without too many additional committees and layers for oversight. So the policy, the document that you received, the policy essentially tries to avoid multiple committees, but also recognizing that the Regional Service Commission Board in certain situations and circumstances would still need kind of an advisory capacity to help make the right decisions for a specific scenarios. So an example of that, so to ensure that the recreation facilities are meeting the needs of the community, the facilities that are receiving those cost-sharing dollars. So oversight that's being recommended would be that there be a facility and program inventory taken on an annual basis. And that's, on an annual basis, there'd be a meeting held, so not a committee, but a general invitation to recreation professionals for this meeting. And when I say recreation professionals, it would be specific roles, such as the high school athletic director, the president of minors, you know, the minor sports program coordinators for senior programs. So they would be able to look at the data that's collected, the inventory that's collected, to be able to speak and to say, and interpret more holistically whether a facility that's receiving cost sharing is in fact meeting the needs of the community. And who better to be able to advise that than recreation professionals who want to see recreation thrive in our community? They're the ones that are in the programs and will be able to provide that insight and inform the Regional Service Commission Board better in terms of the, I guess, empowering them to make more informed decisions on whether a facility is meeting the needs of the community. And then another scenario where we would try to avoid multiple committees, but where there would be a recognition that there needs to be an advisory capacity to the Regional Service Commission Board would be a scenario where perhaps a new facility is being proposed in a subregion. So in that scenario, who better to have that discussion than those board members that are a part of that subregion? So they would be informed in the, by the information provided in exactly this scenario here, where you still have a facility inventory, you've got recreation professionals being able to inform you where, you know, there are gaps in recreation. So this ad hoc regional subgroup would be able to use that information and be able to use that information more specifically for their subregion and discuss whether a new facility is in fact needed. And so you can see, this is just an example of, for example, Western Charlotte. So that subregional group would look like members of the board still. So essentially, it'd be the chair members for each local service district and then the municipal representative. And that would essentially make this subregional group. But the only time this group would exist is in a scenario where a new facility is being proposed. And then as soon as their task is done, they would essentially disperse their ad hoc committee of the board. And so they would be able to give, advise the Regional Service Commission Board on whether they would recommend a new facility within their subregion. So in terms of oversight as well, so it's important that these facilities that are receiving contribution are, there's transparency and that the public understand and know where the money is going. So what would be proposed would be that the facilities that are receiving contribution would submit facility budgets, operational costs, and they would submit demographic information to ensure that their facilities are serving the broader community. And this, these reports would be given to the Regional Service Commission Board. And most importantly, it would be published on our regional website so that the general community could see, and there would be transparency in that. And then another, another important factor as well for these regional, sorry, the recreation facilities would be that there'd be no additional user fees for non-residents. So that would mean not, since they're receiving cost-sharing contribution, this would be additional user fees for non-residents would not be something that they could impose. So just a quick summary of what I just went over. So the idea would be for the whole region, local service districts and municipalities to contribute two cents towards essentially a recreation pot to be divided according to high school catchments to the major recreation facilities in the region. So again, just to highlight, the contribution of each community would stay within their high school catchment to that major facility that they, you know, in theory, use or more likely to use because it's within their subregion, if you will. And the oversight body would be the Regional Service Commission Board that would serve that purpose. So the policy that's being proposed here, of course, it is a working draft. And we'll talk about what potential next steps could look like. But essentially, this is, this policy that's being proposed is an opportunity for the board to apply a unique solution that's tailored to our region. So most importantly, it's ensuring that there's oversight for these facilities that are receiving dollars towards their operational costs. And also that the community's voices are heard as well in this contribution. So in every conversation I had, I think that, you know, we all kind of acknowledged when I was chatting with board members that a province-imposed solution feels imminent, feels like, you know, it will eventually come. And what we, I guess, the opportunity that we have right now is to be able to apply a solution right now that's tailored to our region. Like mentioned, we're not like the Fundy region. We have smaller rural communities and the dynamics and the needs of a cost-sharing model may look different than a model that maybe is more tailored around major municipalities. So this is our opportunity, this is the board's opportunity to be able to apply a solution that's tailored to our subregion and also make sure that there, that the community, the local community voices are able to be heard and there's local oversight for the tax contribution. And then another, I guess, that, one of the motivations for the boards to be able to move this conversation forward, the idea of cost sharing would be right within our region. Of course, we have Eastern Charlotte, who has a new facility that's being proposed. And the work that I'm doing there, yeah, I will be giving an update on that to the RCO. But essentially, you know, there are needs in a region that require a new facility. But at the same time, there are, there is a facility that's already in the region that requires assistance, cost-sharing assistance from the surrounding communities to be able to, it desperately needs that contribution from the communities around. Without it, it, you know, may not be able to serve the recreation needs in the community. So we already have a situation that if there's, if basically a decision is, if the conversation is not able to move forward and there's no solution applied, I would, I would, I would say that probably Eastern Charlotte would feel would feel the consequences of that earlier than the rest of the region because they're facing a situation where, you know, that existing facility, the Patrick Connors Arena, needs that contribution. And there is a need in the subregion to see other recreation needs met through potentially a new facility. So it is a motivation to know and to assist, the board can assist with that, to move that conversation forward. Because whatever the board decides to make, there definitely does need to be a solution applied to Eastern Charlotte. And just in general, as mentioned, the sustaining of major facilities is identified as an issue across the province. It's essentially a leaky roof, if you will. We have a leaky roof, and if we have the opportunity now to potentially apply a tailored solution to be able to fix that, it might be better to fix it now than wait for potentially a solution to just be suggested for us or wait for the problem to get worse. So of course, one of the barriers to cost sharing is, in the discussions, of course, we've had, is public sites. So that is a challenge to make sure that enough people get up to those meetings and that there's enough support and communication to community members to be able to effectively communicate the benefits of seeing contribution to recreation. So there is, I guess, tools, if you will, within the Regional Service Commission's capacity to be able to authorize, I guess, a form of cost sharing. So I'm actually gonna pass it along to Hollis to explain what that would look like. And I'm gonna stop sharing my screen here.
So essentially, just boiled down in a few words, over our Recreation Master Plan, there was a need for cost sharing, some kind of cost-sharing solution in the region for all of our recreation facilities. If we don't do it, we're gonna be in trouble. The Regional Service Commission does have a tool within legislation, which is our cooperative with the regional budget. If you remember, last year, we talked about $50,000 for policing study. And that would have been in that budget, and then that kind of comes out of the tax base of everybody in the region. That's the tool, except that this is a much bigger scale, so it requires much more thought, consultation, and everything else. But that's the tool that we're talking about. Put simply, the Regional Service Commission, if it wants to, can create this sort of pot of money that supports all of the recreation facilities in the region. That's the gist of it.
All right, so at this point, have you done those? Okay, so we'll take questions from any board members. And if you're on Zoom, I'm supposed to be looking there, but I gotta look here. If you raise your hand, so I'm gonna be kinda, I'm gonna be kinda back and forth. So if you, if you would like, if a board member would like to ask a question, please just raise your hand, whether you're on the screen or in here. Sam?
Yeah, just a quick one. Thanks, Hollis, for the explanation. But where does the money come from? Is it a tax?
Yes.
Property tax.
Yes.
And this, the commission has the authority to increase property tax?
We do it now through our cooperative regional budget. So every year, like, this year, our budget is around $120,000 for that particular budget. And that supports our, everything that isn't local planning or solid waste. So we have that now, and that actually goes out now and goes on the LSD tax bills as well as, and it's a bill to each municipality. Already exists. This is just making that significantly larger.
So the LSDs and/or the municipalities, for that matter, do not have a say in that two-cent increase? It's totally?
Oh, absolutely. It's the budget. So the budget that I'm preparing now for '21 doesn't include this at all because we haven't talked about it enough, nearly enough. But it's within the budget of the Regional Service Commission, that that...
Yeah, I don't, I didn't have an issue with it, any of it. It is, you know, if people in my LSD say to me, you know, is this a tax increase? Or where does it come from? And I have the authority. I'm having a problem to explain that to because when I look at the other Eastern Charlotte committee that's proposing, you know, a five-cent increase, how does that happen? Would that come through the commission as well, or would that be?
That's a little different and a lot more complex if it's, if it's not the whole region. So what we're saying at our starting point is, of the whole region, it's easy because it's a cooperative regional budget that this pot of money is created, this line item in the budget is created for a recreation facility support, let's call it.
I think it's a good idea, I guess.
And we, the number that goes beside that is the equivalent to two cents for $100 of assessment increase for the region, for all, for the assessment of the region.
So if they did present a plan to put another facility in Eastern Charlotte and it meant a five-cent increase or a three-cent increase or whatever, then at that point, that would go to LSDs, that'd say?
Oh, yeah, that's, that's a whole, there's a whole...
Some of the other parts of the province, you read this stuff where somebody opted out or didn't...
Yeah, no, there's a bunch of different possibilities, options and approaches to that, to doing just one part. So if we're talking about Eastern Charlotte, for instance, and facility that rose there, there's a couple of things. But what this does, one way of looking at this is, if you've got, let's say, Patrick Connors Arena.
Yes.
And so now they are giving support to the tune of, I don't know, whatever it is, $110,000 a year from this, from the Regional Service Commission Recreation Fund. So any facility like that now has that in their business plan. So if they were going to expand or do something like that and they were going to talk to provincial partners or federal partners or whoever it is, it just strengthens everybody's business plan if they know that they have this amount of income now that they didn't have before.
And just to jump in there, so an example of, the example of Kent North, that's what Hollis is describing is essentially what they did was the local service district chairs and the municipalities that supported the idea of this new facility. They all wrote their letter of support and went to the minister with the Recreation, the Recreation Master Plan and the feasibility plan to say, this is what we'd like to see as kind of like the subregion. And the minister, without a public site, did say, okay, that, you know, to, they moved ahead with not only a new facility, but also support of a recreation director as well. So that was the Kent North strategy.
Thank you, Tanya. Thanks, Hollis.
Anything else, Sam? Winston?
Well, we already have it. We're, Manor Sutton is taxed and the village is taxed, whatever, we're taxed right now. Is this...
That's right.
...on top of the 2% on top of what we're giving now, or?
No, no, it wouldn't be.
Oh, no. Yeah, go ahead, Tanya.
You know, it wouldn't be. In fact, if, because from what I understand, Manor Sutton and Harvey already have an agreement between themselves. Just in working with the group in the last couple of years, if there was interest in the Regional Service Commission being just that third party, because from what I've understood, there's just been some challenges with the agreement on kind of an annual basis. So if it was easier for... um, if it was easier for Harvey and Mayor Sutton to have the Regional Service Commission, uh, take on the administration of this instead, then that certainly would be an option, but it's, it certainly would not be an increase. Uh, it would just, you know, if they want to continue with the current, um, agreement that they have, uh, but, uh, yeah, the, it certainly would not be an increase, uh, for that, for that region. It would basically be just the existing agreement that you guys have.
Any other questions for, any on Zoom? Any questions?
I have one.
Okay, Dennis?
Tanya, when, uh, we talked there earlier on McAdam and, and, uh, the LSD of, of McAdam, where would we fit in there if, if we're putting in this two cents? So what's that mean? Does it go to Harvey or does it go to St. Stephen?
Great question. Great question, Dennis. Um, so, sorry, Mayor Stanix?
Sorry, go ahead, Tanya.
Um, so the, within the policy, again, this is the nuances of understanding the region. So, uh, McAdam is a high school catchment in and of itself. Uh, when I first came in, I thought, you know, there would be maybe some opportunity for cost sharing between McAdam and Harvey, but when I dug a bit further, they're very separate communities and have their own recreation programs. There might be a few people that, you know, share services, but the policy that's proposed in the document would, would, uh, say that at the time of cost sharing, uh, that contribution in McAdam would actually look like, um, contribution towards the recreation director, um, instead of a major facility. Um, so we recognized in doing work in McAdam that, uh, the amazing recreation director they have there services the, not only the village, but the whole, whole community, the, the surrounding communities. And so contribution would stay within the McAdam High School catchment and it would go towards the recreation director.
We was already starting and kind of cold, we ended up, we're supposed to have a meeting with Greg Evans, but with the COVID, it's, that's gone on the back burner there now.
Yes, yeah.
Should we just wait until after this is decided here rather than meet with Greg Evans to get some more information?
Yeah, I would, I would encourage continued conversation because as you know, and as we've had conversations with Greg Evans, there is, um, provincial, and that's the beauty of recreation directors right now have implemented in this cost sharing agreement, uh, there's provincial support from Tourism, Heritage and Culture. So I would, I would, um, recommend continuing those conversations to see that move forward. And then whatever's decided on this level could just be incorporated into what is already in place.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Ken, did you have your hand up?
No, I was just saying, uh, that's, that's the way I understood it as well, that Tanya explained. I would just put my thumb up.
Okay. Awesome. Any other board members on Zoom? Faith, anything? Uh, Wayne, anything? No? Okay. Just cause I can't see your hands so up, but you're sticking them up. All right. Any other questions?
What are you doing with La Pro?
Pardon me?
What are you gonna do about La Pro? That's my favorite subject on this show. Do you know what they're gonna do?
Well, turn that over to Tanya, Wayne. She can talk about what we have a problem with then.
La Pro, um, yes, uh, I mean, in conversations with La Pro, I would say, um, they're a, a local service district that maybe are a little bit more hesitant to jump on board with the idea, um, of just a, well, I mean, a new facility within Eastern Charlotte, um, but there's also a little bit of hesitation towards cost sharing. But I think even La Pro recognizes if they're to say that they prefer to use St. John's facilities, um, then they recognize that St. John is having cost sharing discussions. Um, and so I think that they're, they, they, they realize that whether they go to St. John or whether they come to, you know, Eastern Charlotte and, um, beyond to use the recreation facilities, it, it'd be continued conversations is, was what I would say to that.
What about the trails? And none of this money is going to them?
Pardon me, Wayne? Pardon me?
None of this money is going to these trails, are they?
Going to, I'm sorry.
The trails.
No, this is, this is specifically just with regards to major recreation facilities. The only exception to that is, like in McAdam's case, a, a recreation director and where it may, um, may be suited. Um, I think in Harvey's case as well, because I know that they've been working hard to see part of the contribution towards a recreation director. So in, that, that's the only scenarios where you'd see cost sharing is major recreation facilities and only in some cases, uh, recreation director personnel.
Okay.
Like, you good, Wayne?
Yeah, sounds good there.
All right. So we'll go to Doug. Had his hand up. So Doug?
I, I just wanted to respond to Wayne. Maybe we should get into a hockey mode and trade those guys in La Pro to the Fundy region. What do you think, guys?
Oh, down, down, down. We're not trading anybody. Oh, dear. Well, oh, leave it to you, Doug. All right. Any other questions from any board members? And this is?
Oh, I just got one more and, and we can answer it if any. Why do these rinks not all charge the same rates?
Why do the rings?
Why don't they all charge the same rental rates?
I'm not sure. I, they, they don't.
Well, say for example, Black's advertising a hundred and twenty-five plus tax. St. Stephen's say a hundred and fifty plus tax and St. Andrews say a hundred and thirty plus tax. Why don't they all go the same price?
Oh, we has to do with what it costs them to operate their facilities and, uh, try to maybe break even or get a little closer to breaking even rather than going in hole. It's probably how largely do just their simple, the simple, uh, map of their operational budgets per year. I would imagine, Tanya, is there anything you could?
Yeah, I would say that's a great question, uh, a, a great answer. Uh, Madam Chair, I, I would say that, that, I would echo that. Um, looking at the various expenses across the facilities, they, they do differ. And, um, I think age and what the facilities offer and, and, um, the amenities that they offer certainly, uh, uh, contribute to the, that cost.
Yeah, but if they all charge the same rate or somewhere in the middle, come on, uh, get a consensus on it and all come up with the same rate, some would make money and some wouldn't lose as much money.
Potentially a further conversation that, um, I think, again, going back to the experts, uh, the recreation professionals that can advise on that kind of stuff. It could be a great conversation to have with minor hockey of, in terms of the values of the various arenas. Um, cause even just in my, my quick inventory, uh, you know, there are, um, certainly different amenities that are offered at the various arenas just within our region. But great question.
Thanks, Wayne. Is anything else from a board member? All right. And, uh, if you haven't had time to read the, um, the, the report or the that Tanya sent out through, Hollis sent through email via Tanya, and again, it's, it's any questions you have, bring them back to the, bring them back to the board. Uh, it's certainly up for far more discussion than what we've had tonight. This is the initial presentation, just to get us talking, get the creative juices flowing in our minds, wrapping our heads around how it would all work. Um, certainly not, not something that we're voting on in the near future. Takes a lot more discussion than what we've had here tonight. But, uh, it's interesting and I will make the distinction of Tanya, Hollis can back me up. Uh, this was a question I, I asked the, the, uh, agreement with Kent North Center. That was, um, a subregional agreement and it was for a specific facility. Um, there's nothing like this done in New Brunswick, what, what our Regional Service Commission has talked about in the discussions we've started. So we're very forward thinking and very, um, uh, very proactive in trying to look at how we can work together to help all of our communities. And I know for me, I fit, I fit the bill. I go to St. Stephen and I think I've told the story around the, the board table before that I was a young girl and I found out, cause my, my address was our, our for St. Stephen. And when I got told I wasn't actually St. Stephen or I was so upset. Like I, I love the town of St. Stephen, but I love living rurally. I'm not gonna move there. Uh, so, but I love it enough and that's the facilities I use and I, we use the Garrison Center often and, uh, regularly when we could. And, uh, so, so I love to see, I love to see us working together to say, how can we all work together to support those facilities that we all use, even though we may not be living within those boundaries. So I think it's great that we're being proactive in having these conversations and that we're being such, um, really leaders in a way, uh, not tooting our own horn, but we're being leaders and having this discussion where maybe it hasn't ever gotten to this point. Maybe other, other places have tried it and it's been shut down before they even got to this point of having, uh, a recreation master plan and hiring an implementer and looking at it deeper. So I think, uh, you all on the board deserve, deserve some kudos for, for having these conversations and being willing to have them because even the willingness to have the conversation is just gets us farther than some, some places have been able to get. So I certainly thank you all for doing that. Take, take the time to look at the report, come back with any questions you have. I'm sure Tanya will be available to, to talk to us again if we have any more questions. And it's just, just, just the first step on and, uh, and we'll see where it goes from here. But it certainly is interesting and Tanya, we thank you for the work you put into it. You did a good presentation tonight. Stick around because we are going to ask some questions from, from anybody else here. And we won't keep you too long because I'm sure you're tired, but we'll see. So thank you. Any other questions from the board just before I close this board? Okay. Any questions?
Just thanks to Tanya.
Okay, yes. Thumbs up.
Just like Joyce, just like Joyce said, I, 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 I thank the board for being willing to have this conversation. And I would absolutely echo what Joyce mentioned that, uh, this board is really forward thinking and the fact that the, the board is willing to have this conversation, uh, is, is really great. And so it's, it's wonderful to be able to, to work, uh, to work for, on your behalf.
Tanya, it's been a pleasure. Any questions? Any questions? No, we're all good. Okay. It was committed, made it a whole, so there's no motions, uh, no, nothing. We're, we're, no more questions. It's good to see you all, even if it's on the screen. And I hope you're all having a wonderful week and, uh, we'll be seeing you some more next week at four. Thank you. Thank you everyone for participating.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks. Tanya, enough. Meeting is adjourned.